Thank you for that.
So, everybody, welcome to the Elko Newmarket City Council meeting for January 12, 2023. This is a hybrid meeting format. The city council is being conducted in a hybrid format. This allows the public to participate in the meeting through Zoom in addition to attending in person. As a result, the number of conduct the meeting in an orderly manner, certain protocols are to be followed. The host will keep all participants muted until the public comment is requested or the public hearing is open. The city council will first solicit comments from those attending the meeting in person. At the appropriate time, the mayor or host will specifically solicit public comment from the Zoom participants. Comment will be solicited from those participating via computer or phone application and then from those participating calling in. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand virtually. The mayor or host will individually recognize those wishing to speak and will invite you to speak. The host will then unmute your microphone and you will be unmuted after you have spoken. To understand how to do that, if you're not familiar, if you go to the toolbar at the bottom of the screen layer in the application, if you go to the reactions button and touch that, it will then raise a number of options, which include raise your hand. And you would follow the same process to lower your hand there afterwards.
Oh, so then if we were not unmuted, do you have to read those again?
Looking at who was in the meeting at the time, they're all very familiar with the document.
All right, so we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, any changes to the agenda?
Council will note that they had received a revised agenda. We had removed the minutes from the December 15th and December 20th items from the agenda. We are still working on those. They're extremely voluminous. We're somewhere in the area of 80 pages, so we're in the process of proofing those. So they will be presented to the council at the next meeting for adoption.
All right, any?
Motion to approve the agenda as announced.
Second.
All right, motion by Josh, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so next up, we have the oath of office for Councilmember Berg and Councilmember Timmerman.
Whichever one of you wants to go first.
Paper, rock, scissors.
We'll go over to the flags.
We'll get both centers so Patrick can get a nice frame of photo here. You could please raise your right hand. Repeat after me, aye.
Aye.
Kate Timmerman.
Kate Timmerman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully.
And to discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office of council member.
The duties of the office of council member.
Of the city of Elko Newmarket.
Of the city of Elko Newmarket.
Minnesota.
Minnesota.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
You were so sworn in. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
He's raised his right hand. Let me repeat after me, aye.
Aye.
Josh Berg.
Josh Berg.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully.
And to discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city council member.
Of city council member.
Of the city of Elko Newmarket.
Of the city of Elko Newmarket.
Minnesota.
Minnesota.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
You were so sworn in. Congratulations on your reelection.
Next up, Officer Hotelling. Hiding in the back. All right. Officer Steve Hotelling began his police office career with the Elko Newmarket Police Department in May of 2019. Prior to employment here, Steve volunteered for many years as a volunteer police reserve officer for the city of Cottage Grove. He also served for over a decade as a security officer with his last duty protecting the state Capitol as an officer for the State Patrol Security Division. During his time here in Elko Newmarket, Steve took on many additional above and beyond duties. Some of those included being a TASER instructor and program coordinator, DWI grant manager and scheduler, and performing the duty of field training officer where he trained in new officers. In November of 2022, Steve left Elko Newmarket PD for a police officer position at another city. In recognition of his over three years of dedicated service protecting our community, I'm presenting Officer Hotelling with the City of Elko Newmarket certificate of appreciation.
Mayor, may I proceed?
Chief Jewels, all yours.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, and council members, members of the public, members of the department. Derek, Officer Irwin, would you please join me? Standing right here. Kind of like a roast. Today, members of the council and public, I have a great honor yet again to introduce to you and the community members and staff here present to our newest officer, Officer Derek Irwin. A little about Derek. He was born and raised in the Mankato area and graduated from Mayor Luther in high school in Mankato. After high school, he attended Minnesota State University. For the record, the best university in Minnesota.
That's arguable.
Now it's on. Very much so, and his dad would say the same thing, as we intended. Go Mavs! Mankato at the same time. The exact same time. Makes me feel old. Anyways, after high school and he started college in Minnesota State now, it was Mankato State when we went, he began taking law enforcement classes. There, he met his eventual beautiful wife Lauren while attending and taking law enforcement classes. She was also taking law enforcement classes. So that's where they met. Fast forward a decade, and if you can count them all there, five children. Lauren was working as a Scott County dispatcher, which is the dispatching service that dispatches for us. Last year, when we opened a position, Lauren told her husband Derek, who was previously working as a Scott County detention deputy. If you see a theme here, they've kind of same department. He's working in the jail, and Lauren had heard that we had an open position here at Elko Newmarket Police Department. She said to Derek that his goal is to be a police officer. She wanted him to be in a wonderful community that supports her police officers. And she said, you gotta apply. So Derek applied and was easily our best candidate. So we're very lucky to have him. And he was smart and listened to his wife, and he was totally right. So in the time I've spent with Derek, I've really learned that he possesses all the qualities we look for in an officer in our community. He's slow to anger, passionate about helping others. He listens very well, is extremely intelligent, and probably most important, always in a good mood. And that is really appreciated here. When I asked Derek about his favorite things to do, he said, and you understand why, spend time with my family and raise my kids, and I really liked that. And I said, but there are some times when you're not doing that. What do you like to do? He said, hit the gym. That's all he like. In the little time he has, he likes to get away and work out, so he's into fitness as well. So with that, I thought very fitting to have our recruiter pin the badge on her husband. So I'm going to ask Lauren to come up to pin the badge on her husband. And then after that, I would like Madam Mayor to come up and swear him in. There you go. Pitch her up. Yeah, it goes through the shirt, not into the chest.
There we go.
And Lauren, I am working on a recruitment stipend for you, and if you can bring us more officers like Derek, we'd appreciate it.
I think that'll be the new process going forward, that you give a smooch to the new.
No, no. Negative. Councilmember Berg.
Aye, Derek Irwin.
Aye, Derek Irwin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To uphold the Constitution.
To uphold the Constitution.
Laws and ordinances.
Laws and ordinances.
And faithfully perform my duties as a police officer.
And faithfully perform my duties as a police officer.
Never betray my badge or the public trust.
Never betray my badge or the public trust.
To have the courage to and will.
Have the courage to and will.
Hold myself and others accountable.
Hold myself and others accountable.
Promote the vision and mission of the department.
Promote the vision and.
Mission of the department.
Mission of the department.
Provide fair and impartial law enforcement.
Provide fair and impartial law enforcement.
Practice community values-based policing.
Provide community-based value.
Practice community values-based policing.
To practice community-based value policing.
Close enough.
Serve with pride, integrity, and excellence.
Serve with pride, integrity, and excellence.
And provide quality service.
And provide quality service.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God. Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody here who would like to speak under public comment?
Commissioner Wolf, do you have any reports?
All right. Anybody online that would like to speak?
There are no hands raised.
Would you like to speak under public comment? Come on up, if you can state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Jonathan Carlson. My address is 26126 Pillsbury Avenue in Elko. Just have a couple of follow-up questions. I've submitted some of them in writing to you, so if you don't have an answer, maybe you can just direct me to who on the council or on the city staff I could follow up with. So one had to do with intersection safety, and the mayor responded to me, so I'll keep following up with him on that. And then there was one regarding noise pollution. So I know, Ms. Christiansen, in the last meeting you mentioned, maybe you were the person to follow up with. So I'm interested, is the city going to require Niagara to submit a noise impact statement?
Yes, immediately following the last city council meeting.
Renee, if you could turn on your mic and hold the microphone close.
Following the last city council meeting, I did request from Niagara a noise impact study. We did have a conference call with a firm that specializes in doing that. My understanding is they're going to be setting some noise meters in the vicinity of the site. One just north, on the north side of the proposed building, and one on the south side to obtain noise readings for today and then try to model noise impact from the proposed development.
Thanks for the follow-up, and then will those results be available or published?
They will. I don't have a timeframe on when we might receive that, but it will be required by the city prior to approval by the city council.
Okay, great, thank you. And then on the light exposure, and you mentioned a site review plan and a lighting plan?
Yeah, a lighting plan was submitted, and they are expanding it to show the foot candle meter readings further out from the parking lot. And they have an electrical engineering company that prepares those. Met with them this Friday, or Monday of this week. They indicated that it had been prepared, but there's so many readings throughout the site. They were looking, you know, maybe like a shaded or something showing polygons or.
I think that add contours, noise contours to show up.
Sure. Just so it's more digestible for the common person.
Okay, and that will also be made available to the public?
Part of, it will be made public, and it will be part of the information that's brought back to the city council.
Great, thank you, and appreciate the follow-up. Thanks for the time, but I just also want to just express my continuing opposition to Niagara coming and not opposition to industrialization of that property, but just the way it's set up now to impact the local residents. Thanks.
Thank you. Come on up. You can state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, I'm Vita Connetz, and I live at 983247 Street East in Lakeville. And at the last public hearing, I spoke to you about the concern about drawdown of the waters above the St. Jordan Aquifer into the Prairie du Sheen, where many private well owners have their wells, and in the surficial geology, and then the river, the Vermillion River that starts here. And that was based on concerns, you may recall, of a study done in Lakeville in 2017 that showed surprisingly to the geologists that that occurred, that there was this drawdown, okay, when we took water from the deep aquifer. I have come across a study that was actually done in Scott County that I want to make sure you know about, and I'll send you the link here afterwards. But it was done to show the effect of the increased development with normal, average pumping conditions, what could happen here in Scott County. So the Lakeville study was actually a test on, where they put, you know, stuff down into the different layers, a multi-aquifer test. This is modeling. But the modeling that was done in Scott County shows a very similar expectation. It shows that with rural buildout by 2030 in the region that includes Elko Newmarket, that the maximum drawdown would be 48 feet in the Prairie du Sheen Aquifer. And again, that's the one above the Jordan where we take our water from. And then also a 55% reduction in Credit River. For us, the important one is the 29% in the Vermillion. And if we allow urban building, and of course, none of this included Niagara, right, with our normal development, if it becomes typical urban density, the numbers increase quite a bit. It is a 38% reduction in Vermillion River base flow by 2030 and a drawdown of, sorry, 84 feet in the aquifer. So I want to bring this to your attention. Again, water is a very precious resource, and I think that you really need to look at this data and actually make sure that a multi-aquifer test is done. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak under public comment? All right, come on up and state your name and address for the record.
Ally Clement, 26511 Xerxes Trail, and that's in Elko. I just wanted to clarify that there's a couple of different things going on with the Niagara that were tabled. And I'm wondering, so I know that there were some zoning issues, that there, I think there were two different things that the council was voting on for zoning, is that correct?
There.
So there was the.
One application for rezoning.
Mm-hmm.
An application for preliminary plot approval, and an application for conditional use permit.
Okay, so. So there's three for the zoning, and all of those have been tabled at this point?
All of them have been tabled.
As well as the subsidy.
Correct.
Business subsidy.
That's correct.
Are all of those tabled until you get the information from Scott County?
From the DNR.
Or, I'm sorry, from the DNR?
Yes, we cannot make any land use-related decisions regarding the applications until we have their determination.
Okay. And who will the DNR be contacting, and how will people that are interested find out?
I'm not exactly sure if they will submit their determination to the Environmental Quality Board, the EQB, or directly to the city. We're waiting as well.
Okay.
We believe that their deadline for their determination, based on our estimate of their days, is January 26. So we'll be anxiously waiting.
Okay. And then have you guys looked into the appeal process after that?
The appeal process from.
For the petition? If they decide not to move ahead with the study, and then somebody files an appeal for that?
I personally have not.
Okay, I was just wondering. All right, I think that's all my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Jody Lucass, 26501 Xerxes Trail. First and foremost, still dead against this. I did a little investigation through my businesses and whatnot. I contacted a lady that I do business with through our foundation that happened to join Hy-Vee. And she came from another grocery store chain, and her job strictly is looking for locations. And I was talking to her, and I just said, well, if there was a water bottling plant, would you move there? She goes, doesn't matter. It's not part of our surroundings. And then I have a gentleman client that is big into Shields, and he finds locations. And granted, we're not the town for them, but I just asked him, does industry help you go there? And they said, no. So before we put a water bottling plant, become an industrial wasteland, you know, let's think, this is not going to bring other businesses in. It's going to bring more industrial businesses in. And then I want to talk about safety, because this just happened to me today. We need to do a new road study, because I almost got taken out by a double-trailored semi that came off the ramp and then went right onto the on-ramp and didn't even see me. And then I almost got sideswiped by a double-trailored FedEx semi. I'm like, I drive a black car, I'm not going too fast, and it's right by Parks Bottle. So I'd really like another traffic study done, because the amount of FedEx trucks that I passed today at 11 o'clock in the morning, and the amount of other semis, we need a new traffic study. And I'm looking to you, Renee, because I need you to put that together, because I lost two vehicles within three months in that intersection. My husband was T-boned, and my daughter was T-boned. You know, and she was injured, and he wasn't, thank God. So I don't think that traffic study is applicable. We need to really look at, and putting the cart before the horse. I mean, how many people have to get injured by more semis and more traffic on that narrow bridge in Pillsbury? I mean, I literally have been driving around on Deuce Road in Pillsbury paying attention, because normally when I just come home, I'm like, I'm going home, I don't pay attention. But all the people that are around that area, I mean, this is going to be disastrous to all those people. And if it's worth our 2040 comprehensive plan, it's not, because these people pay taxes, they've been here for decades. And one business pushing out all those people, that's crazy to me. That's just asinine. But that's all I have to say. And I have rampant income, so you're okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. I just want to throw a plug in for other places or resources to contact to help us, because I don't think any of us disagree that we need, you know, that bridge looked at and figured out. And so we are, as a council, meeting at the I-35 Solutions Alliance, is that what the whole? We're planning to attend their February meeting. And then contacting county and state legislatures.
But it's Pillsbury Road, too.
Okay.
That road is not made. Pillsbury Road is not made for semis. It's barely passable or even drivable if you have a combine on there. And those seasons happen, and if you're going to have them come out, my church is right there, and I can't tell you how many times we have waited for the combine to go by or the grain truck and whatnot. That's going to be, that road is a horse and buggy road. I mean, two horses and buggies, not semis. You know, so that's where I'm, you know, concerned. Yeah.
And I think that is a county.
Yeah, county road as well.
Yeah.
So we're, I just, I want to just.
Yeah.
Provide additional ways in which we can try to come to solutions on some of these issues.
Yeah, we just need a new study now that we're full-blown in action again. 24/7, seven days a week. We don't do everything in Elko Newmarket. Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Come on up, I can only see a hand.
I know, I can't see you either, but that's okay.
State your name and record for the address.
My name is Jamie Carlson, I'm Jonathan's better half. I will not give my address again, because we live off of Pillsbury Avenue, and I had a very bad experience in the parking lot, which has stopped me from coming to these meetings. So thank goodness for the Elko Police Department, and whoever Officer Josh is intervened from the retired mayor getting into my face, who, he's like this tall, and I'm down here, telling me that I didn't belong at these meetings, because we lived out in the country. So, yeah, he did attack quite a few women. I'm the only one that put my hand up and said, this is my boundary, do not overstep my boundary. And he said, I know where you live. That's a directed threat.
So ma'am, ma'am, public comment is not for the airing of interactions you might have had with other individuals?
But I gave my address, Tom Terry. I gave my address, he got my address. How do you think I sleep at night when John goes to work?
Ma'am, if you have concerns related to your particular safety, law enforcement is present.
I already have contacted them.
Correct.
And I have three sons in law enforcement.
Public hearing is related to policy issues associated with the city.
Just let me finish, please. Tom, I know you like to give the sales pitch, but this is reality. This has really scared me, and I don't need that. Now, as far as the traffic, we live off of Pillsbury. Scott County Sheriff's Department has been very good to us. But we see FedEx, and they're called double tandem semis, creeping by at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning, not taking 70 that they are supposed to be taking. And they are lit up like Christmas trees, so we can see them going by, and they are hitting, they are jaybreaking right before the roundabout. So it's very dangerous off of Pillsbury. I don't know how Niagara can come here and guarantee that they're going to take Deuce to 35W, because some of these truckers are on a timing zone, and they don't have time to wait in line. So they will take, sneak, which is against their company's policy, it's not against the law, to sneak around, take Pillsbury, and go down to 70. So I agree, we need a new traffic study, but it's got to be a 24-hour traffic study. If there is such a thing, I don't know. You could check on that, but I just think that the traffic, somebody's going to get hurt. And I don't want them climbing one of our trees on our property, because I don't think I could live there ever again if I knew somebody died. The other thing I wanted to bring up was, oh, and by the way, I did contact FedEx, and they said they warn their drivers not to drive down there. That's the comment I got back. They give them a warning. So the other thing is, over on I-70, when Amazon came in and they redid 70, they built a retaining wall, and I've talked to two homeowners over there. And granted, it's not the most beautiful thing to look at, but it does drown out the sound for them. It gets rid of some of the light and the pollution, you know, just it settles things down for the homeowners. It's still very difficult. settles things down for the homeowners. It's still very difficult for them to live across the street from FedEx, from Amazon, I think maybe Schneider is over, what is it?
Schneiderman.
Schneidermans, never been there. So, I'm wondering, why hasn't Niagara come forward or Ryan Companies and said, "We're going to build a wall," or "We'll build to make it look natural, a big hill before us, before we flatten out, with trees. That's a sound barrier, and it's also something that you don't have to look at a brick wall the rest of your life." Picture this, picture it being in your home, right across the street from your driveway. Do you want to look at a wall? Do you want to look at semis? What do you want to look at? Because we could take Elko's Niagara and take it to Farmington and put it right before your front yard, and see how you like that, because you're trying to put in a corporation in a residential, and the two don't connect. And it doesn't give us sleep at night. You maybe sleep good at night, thinking you're ahead of it and you're going to make this big name for yourself, but you're not going to make a name for yourself, because there are hundreds of people saying no, and there's only five council members to vote. So, you have to think about yourselves, you have to think about your political careers, what this makes when you vote. You want to vote so that the people's choice is heard. That's all I have to say. Don't interrupt me, Tom.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? All right, closing public comment, and we will move on to the annual organizational matters.
Madam Acting Mayor, if you would like, it has worked best in the past if I simply walk the council through the action items associated with...
Yes, please.
This agenda item. So, give me one second here, and I will pull up the information. So, the first item under our annual organizational matters is the assignment of the acting mayor position. As the council is aware, this individual serves in the mayor's stead. We have a great example tonight, if the mayor is unavailable or incapacitated. And so, that has been an item that different councils have used different rationales. Last year's discussion was a rotate, you know, rotating it around through other council people, but the council simply needs to make a decision who's going to serve in that position for the upcoming year.
Do you want to turn at it?
Sure.
Shanky, Shanky.
So, the first action item would be...
I nominate Bryce. One second.
All right, so we have a nomination for Bryce to serve as acting mayor, by Kate, second by Josh.
We can, the actual nomination could be by consent, and then we'd adopt the resolution. So, if there's general consent...
Yes.
So, we'd need a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-three zero one approving the acting mayor for the city of Elko New Market, naming Bryce Shanky in that position.
So moved, we're doing that?
Yep.
So, you're doing good.
All right. Motion by me, second by Josh, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So, the remaining items just simply require a motion, and we can do it all as one motion with the council making decisions on particular appointments as we're going through. The first one has generally been preset with regards to representatives to the scale organization, the mayor serving as the primary, and all of the council members serving as alternates. That allows, we post it, and that allows council members to just attend as they see fit, if there are particular topics that they'd wish to participate in, or if there's a larger event. Is the council agreeable to that? Is that their desire? Okay?
Yes.
And then, as I should note, as part of that, the city administrator serves as the alternate to the mayor on the scale executive committee. The second item is with regards to the Scott Joint Prosecution Association. The council aware of this, but for purposes of the audience, the cities in Scott County have joined together and established a joint powers organization for purposes of efficiently and cost-effectively providing prosecution services, and that is managed by a board. Historically, the city administrators serve as the primaries and their chiefs of police serve as the alternates on that board. Would that also be the council's desire this coming year?
Yes.
Yes.
The next item would be the joint, the regional joint training facility. Again, same thing, the city administrators or other designees from cities serve as the primary. In our case, I serve as the primary representative to that board, the chief of police services is my alternate. Would that, again, be the council's desire this coming year?
Yes.
Now, we get down to the fill-in-the-blank portion. With regards to I thirty-five Solutions Alliance, we'd be looking for a primary representative and an alternate. This year, Bryce was serving as the primary, and council member Josh was serving as the alternate.
Yeah, I'm fine with staying on.
Same and same?
Same.
Okay. With regards to the Fire Relief Board, under Minnesota State Statute, the city is, has two representatives to the Fire Relief Board. We essentially represent the citizens of the community who underwrite the obligations of the fire relief as it relates to the pension and their activities. I have historically served as an automatic representative, but we also have one council person serve as well. The last few years, it's been council member Timmerman.
I'll keep it.
It only makes sense for our house, for the whole fire thing, always like...
Stay in with Kate.
The next item is council representative to the Community and Civic Events Committee. The council has historically, based on the composition that was established by the council, has one representative on that committee. The last few years, it has been Amanda.
You haven't done a very good job, but, you know.
I'll give a call. A lot more things to do. I would like, I would like to keep it.
It's all yours.
All yours.
Thanks.
The next item is representative to the MVTA Minnesota Valley Transit Authority Board. We are an ex officio non-voting member of that board. Given the long-term planning cycles for transit, and that someday transit will be coming this direction, we have participated. However, the council has also determined that whoever's appointed can use their own judgment based on the agendas, whether or not it's necessary to go to every meeting. Council member Bryce has been serving as the representative to that board in the past.
I can keep reviewing agendas. It's fine.
The next item is the Administrative Appeals Board. This is established under ordinance as the board that reviews appeals related to utility bills and utility billing for residents who, there's a decision that needs, that goes outside of administrative authority and discretion, or has, is seeking relief outside of what was required by policy. For the last couple of years, that position has been held by council member Josh, and the other two board members are myself and the city accountant. Would it be the council's intent that myself, Kelly, would continue in that role, and then which council member would like to continue to serve?
I enjoy it. I don't know if somebody else wants to get on it. We've got a good flow going.
All yours.
All yours.
Okay, and those are those items. So, that being said, we would be asking the council to adopt Resolution twenty-three zero one, or, excuse me, to make a motion approving those individuals as previously indicated to those appointments.
So moved.
Can one of you say second?
Second.
Motion by Bryce, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so then we have the designation of the official paper. Any motions? Any questions?
Motion to adopt Resolution twenty-three dash zero two.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Bryce, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the designation of the official depositories.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash zero three.
Second.
Motion by Bryce, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Onto the consent agenda. Any questions on anything on consent?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Kate, second by Bryce, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we have no public hearings, no general business, so we are on to reports. Administration?
I have nothing specific to report. Are there any questions for staff?
No questions. Public Works had a written report, anything additional?
Corey had nothing additional that he wanted me to relate to the council.
All right, chief?
Any questions by the council at all?
Brady, can you turn on a mic and pull it closer?
I don't even have one. Sorry.
You get to...
Any questions by the council about my report or anything? All right, I already took up enough time earlier, so Joe would call me Hollywood at this point, so.
Not for me.
All right.
I enjoyed the pictures, thanks for sharing those.
You're welcome.
All right, engineering?
I have no report, I have no remarks, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take a crack at them.
All right, community development?
I do have one item. I'm seeking feedback from the council regarding possible amendment to the city code that would allow a mobile service unit similar to a transient merchant. City staff was recently approached by a business that is interested in setting up a mobile unit that would perform a service at a regular location with regular hours. The specific inquiry, a business inquiry, was related to an individual wishing, wishing to establish a mobile veterinary clinic with regular location and regular hours. Purely as an example, they would be at the Firehouse Grill, or the Elko New Market Retail Center, every Monday and Tuesday between these hours. And then another location within the community on, on the east end of town on Thursdays. Having a regular, regular location and hours would allow the business to advertise and residents to become familiar with hours and location. The city code currently does not allow such an activity. It's very similar to transient merchant, however, the definition of a transient merchant does not allow somebody to locate for more than fourteen days, consecutive days, and it doesn't allow somebody to perform a service. The city staff researched area, city, codes of area cities, approximately a dozen area cities in Scott County and surrounding area, and found only one city code that had been amended to allow such an activity, and that was New Prague. They amended their definition for transient merchant. Staff does see pros and cons to allowing such an activity. The pros would be, it would allow increased services for area residents, and provide a more affordable way for someone to start up a business, which may eventually lead to a brick and mortar location. Alternatively, it could deter or delay the establishment of brick and mortar locations within, in the city, could provide a disadvantage to those businesses who do pay for brick and mortar locations, in, who have to pay for increased development costs. It could result in a proliferation of mobile businesses, taking out parking spaces and potential nuisance, nuisances within, associated with such activity. And then the general impact to property taxes based on no brick and mortar locations. It really is a policy decision of the city council, so we're seeking feedback. We have reviewed this with the city attorney. Transient merchants are regulated by Minnesota State Statute, and there's a definition in state statute that transient merchant allows for the sale of goods, but not to perform, to perform a service. So, if the council is in support of such an activity, the city attorney recommends adding an additional section to the city code that would be titled, you know, mobile service, mobile service units, very similar to what we did with mobile food units that now allow food trucks. So, if you have any other questions for me, I'd be happy to take them. We're seeking direction, and, and, you know, I don't have pictures necessarily available to share, but in doing some research on, online, there really are quite a number of different mobile businesses that are popping up, anything from mobile hair salons, to mobile nail salons, to mobile gyms, you know, mobile grooming. People could go to an individual's home and perform the service at their home, but to set up in a parking lot, that's where the issue comes in.
Thoughts, questions? I got a puppy, so I need this service.
I have questions.
Go ahead.
So, I guess my, my thought, if, if, and if an ordinance is silent, and the rules are silent, and the statutes are silent, why does that equal prohibit?
This would also be a zoning issue, and your zoning ordinance says that anything that isn't specifically allowed is prohibited.
So, that's the piece, because I couldn't find a reason why this is, wouldn't just be allowed. What would happen right now if one of these trucks came into our city and started providing services? What would we do?
We would notify them of non-compliance and ask them to stop. If they didn't stop, they'd be issued a citation.
And, and non-compliance with the fact that it's a violation of the zoning, not that they are failing to license to something that we don't have a license for, or anything like that. It's purely zoning. Okay? I mean, I, I, I think, I think it's completely unnecessary to license every mobile business. I guess my opinion, I mean, the cons list, I don't see any of those cons that the, the city should get involved with. They feel more of a, just a market determination type thing, and people are getting innovative, and if mobile units are the way to go, then they're the way to go. And, I mean, that's why people may choose to not do brick and mortar anymore. So, I don't think those really matter to me at all. I have zero concerns of the licensing, because they have to be, they're licensed under the Board of Vet, and, and that kind of owns that piece of it, so I don't think we need to be experts in licensing that either. So, could we do something that, other than licensing, or other than whatever, to just allow them, as long as they have the right credentials and the right oversight by county, state, whatever?
So, one thing, they are permitted now. They can visit individual homes and travel there. This is simply if they're going to set up shop in a fixed location, other than actually visiting the client directly, so.
So, it, but, but with, with, like, there's a puppy groomer that goes around, and I've, we've used her before. Can she not do that unless she pulls in my driveway?
Correct.
So, technically, she's violating, or they're violating the zoning.
Well, she could park on the street in, in your driveway while she's performing the service at your home, very similar to a plumber or HVAC technician.
They're, they're attending the location that they're providing the service.
And how about, sorry?
Public safety-wise, may I add a comment? Council member Burke, say this mobile vet pulls up right next to a residential, and now there's fifty dogs barking constantly. That could cause a public nuisance that you might not allow a brick and mortar to move into a certain area. I think that's the zoning portion of it. Fitness trailer, fifty people in a parking lot, I've seen this, you know, yelling, screaming while they're doing CrossFit. Stuff like that could really impact residents, neighbors nearby, and I think that's why the businesses are normally regulated for zoning, putting them in certain, certain areas and stuff like that. Dog bites, if you have a mobile vet clinic and it's near a restaurant and kids are walking in and out, a dog gets away and attacks a child. Stuff like that are things that you get to regulate as council members in zoning, but if you don't have that, it's kind of that, anything can go anywhere, and it could be a public hazard, too. And that, those are some of the concerns, I think. As a police officer, I roll up and there's dog, you know, barking dogs. I have to now enforce that, and there's different things to think about.
Fixed, fixed point for extended periods of time.
And we had the same debate when we talked about the mobile food units, and I don't see a lot of those concerns happening with mobile food units, you know, coming into our neighborhood, and, so, and, and we haven't seen the issue. Now, maybe it's different and COVID hit and everything else, but, so, is a private parking lot different than, like, so, could they go to Firehouse, like, in the example that was used? I mean, is that Firehouse's parking lot, so Kate could invite them there, and they would be able to operate?
No, this, this would be so that they wouldn't, let's say, just set up shop in Kate's parking lot perpetually in the mobile. they wouldn't, let's say, just set up shop in Kate's parking lot perpetually in the mobile unit, or they would have to have a permit that would potentially regulate how that would occur.
With the way our ordinances currently sit, not what we're potentially looking to do.
Typically, businesses' parking areas are designed with a minimum number of parking spaces for the square footage of that space. Like Kate probably has the minimum number of our Firehouse, number of parking spaces that are required under the city zoning code, as is the strip mall. So taking up a number of spaces is, if they had extra spaces, there would not be an issue with zoning, I don't think, but. Andrea, I mean, we could write a section to the code that would regulate them without licensing them, is that correct? Yeah, we could, we could write regulations about how long that they can't take up required parking spaces.
Where are these people considering, thinking of wanting to go? They said anything to you?
Maybe your parking lot? It's purely an example.
No, I know, I'm just, I'm just trying to think as a local business owner, I mean.
We don't have that many pub, parking spaces in Elkanu Market.
It would make sense that they're coming to Firehouse, they're going to Endzone, they're going to Newmarket Bank area. As a business owner, I would expect that there's, should be something written that they have to come talk to us, and not just take up shop.
Absolutely, that's private property.
It's private property, so you could ask them to leave, and if they don't, you can call the police department to, to have them leave. I think the, I think the idea is that, staff envisions that the desire to do this is going to be a growing trend going forward. You know, it's, it does serve as, it serves as both an incubator for new types of businesses without brick and mortar, but at the same time, the model is to not have to have brick and, and mortar. They have the same impacts as a brick and mortar with regards to demands on parking and those types of things, but they're going into places that have been designed hypothetically, that are already have, those, that are already meeting those needs typically at a minimum as well. What we're really looking for is overall direction from the council, is this something you want to permit? Feedback that you're giving us on how we should do it is appreciated, but as a zoning item, it would have to get worked through by the planning commission anyways.
I mean, didn't, did this not apply when we had the farmer's market?
Farmer's market is a different.
They're regulated differently, and they're really selling goods. Yeah, they're addressed in a different section.
So this is just for the purposes of services?
Yeah, our ordinance doesn't allow for providing a service.
Got it. See, it still blows my mind, the whole, like, if it's silent, and I get the zoning, so that's just where I gotta, I gotta wrap my head around that. If it's silent, it doesn't say we prohibit it, we just don't technically allow it, and therefore it's prohibited, which is backwards.
Yep, and, and also with the farmer's market, that was an event that actually was covered by zoning regulations applying to the facility they were holding it at, so it wasn't a separate independent thing entirely.
So I guess my position, I absolutely wanna make it as easy as possible for any kind of business to be able to come in here, and we don't put up any perceived or real artificial barriers to them doing business. And I just wanna make it easy. And make sure that they comply with everything that they need to comply with, or, you know, that they're not causing any nuisances or whatever, but I think we get so quick to, like, and, and if it is the growing trend, then let's do it right, and let's take our time. And, and I'm not saying that you were trying to do that, so let's, I mean, I think maybe there is a, a need to look at transient mobile type service and businesses and whatnot, but I just, let's, we thought we were gonna get a whole slew of food trucks, and unfortunately we haven't, and I just.
I think the first question, really what we're asking is, do you wanna provide for it or not?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
I think it's already happening, to be quite honest. I already admitted to using one, well, but I guess they're in front of my house, if my house didn't pass, it's all good, okay.
Alright, you have what you need?
We can, uh.
You have more than?
That clears mud?
Yeah, that's very clear.
Anything else for community development?
No, thank you.
Alright. Anything additional from parks?
Not at this time.
Alright, CCEC, I do not have a report, we meet in two weeks. Alright, scale, I think is, is, scale's tomorrow.
Scale's tomorrow, executive committee meeting was on Monday, or last Monday. The discussion there primarily focused on a couple of things. One was a discussion related to who is, who has the right to participate in executive committee meetings. This is a topic that seems to come up cyclically at scale. My personal opinion is it's kind of a waste of time, cause everybody's welcome at all meetings, so it's kind of a moot point. But it was important to some people to discuss. The other item that was discussed was whether or not this, the municipal, the county and municipalities within Scott County and the townships wanted to provide any feedback related to the legislation going through that is related to the legalization of recreational marijuana. And the, there was a strong support from that item that any comment, if it is going to be provided, would not be related to the issue of the pros or cons of legalization, but based on the if then, if it is legalized, two key points, one, cities and other local units of government that are impacted by its legalization should receive a slice of the pie from the revenue generated with it to cover their costs associated with it. And then the second point would be that there should be a, a level of local control with regards to, you know, where it's located, those things. So there was a letter prepared, it's been circulated, it's been presented to the mayor and asked for whether or not he would sign it. I, but it's in process, so.
Alright. And that was both exec and service delivery, or no?
That was executive service delivery. We did not have a meeting in December, and our meeting is actually coming up later this month.
Sounds good, I-35?
I joined this morning in Bryce's place, and I left my notes at home, but the agenda, so they gave a legislative update, they talked about the I-35 Burnsville to Lakeville study that they're gonna be doing, MINDOT, Ryan Wilson gave an update on that, so they'll be doing a study on that, and maybe you've already been engaged in some of those discussions, to kinda look at what that whole thing should look like, all the way, you know, north of 50 and whatever, with the exchange there. And then we are on the books for February 9th, or whatever, then, then next I-35's meeting is, they tried to bump us to March, but we, I pushed back a little bit, and. Good. That was that.
Alright, any discussion by council?
Did we want to talk about the TAB?
Sure.
So the TAB, what does that stand for?
Technical Advisory Board.
Can I make a point of information? In regards to the I-35, is that meeting open to the public?
I have no idea, I would assume, well.
I guess I would like to attend the February 9th meeting, and I don't know if it's open to the public.
And where are they held?
I think Richfield.
Richfield?
Early in the morning is what I heard.
We'll look into it. We've never had anybody from the public come, but that doesn't mean that it shouldn't be if it's allowed, so we'll look into it, and we'll make a, make a post about it.
Thank you. Thanks Bryce. Alright.
The TAB, Technical Advisory Board, in relation to the Met Council, or MINDOT, Met Council? I can't remember.
It's.
That was Met Council.
It is the Met Council, Met Council's the Regional Transit Authority, and they make recommendations regarding the spending of federal dollars. And so the Technical Advisory Board is basically the body that makes recommendations to the Met Council on where those investments are made.
So there was an application, or some metro cities or the league sent something out saying that they're accepting, accepting applications, and with Bryce being on I-35, I shot him a message saying, hey, maybe one of us on council should get onto that, which might help our case a bit. But that was as far as we went, and said, let's maybe bring it up, see if anybody was interested, otherwise I nominate Bryce to apply for it.
This is a first.
Voluntold. But I said I would do it if nobody else wanted to, so.
What all does it require out of you guys, how, I don't know.
Yeah, that's the thing, I gotta, I gotta look at that a little bit more to see what kinda time commitment it is, and how many meetings we're looking at, and.
So a good.
Probably monthly or quarterly.
So a good resource would be County Commissioner Ulrich, he's the county's representative on the TAB, and he'd be able to give you a very practical, this is what it really requires, type of feedback on that. If you want, I can connect you with John.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Bryce, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.